Welcome everyone, we'll go ahead and start our special council meeting tonight. We could, we'll call, I call the meeting to order and if we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To flag of the United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Hello. My condolences, we're so sorry to hear that.
It was, it's been a shock.
Oh, okay, we wondered if that wasn't, it wasn't something that was.
No, he's been ill for a little while, but he's been in the hospital for about three weeks. We thought he was gonna be going to rehab and he just took a turn for the worse and went on Friday to say goodbye. He was like gone within an hour.
Oh, no, sorry for that, sorry to hear that.
He was a Berlin resident for like forty-four years.
Oh.
I love this town and Matt and I moved here when Trent was one, so we live right around the corner, so.
We're, we're so sorry.
Thanks guys.
So just so people know, unfortunately Kate lost her father-in-law, so yeah, just so that people understand.
Yes, yes, no, I was, I was gonna say, yeah, why, yeah, no, I, yeah, yes.
Every meeting.
I get her every chance I get, are you kidding?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, counselor, Atkinson.
Here.
Counselor Capola.
Here.
Mia Kudinsky.
Here.
Counselor Peonesa.
Here.
Counselor Prusen.
Here.
So Rosso.
Here.
The Beach.
Here.
Hey, you have a form.
All right, thank you, Kate. So just, we have our, just one piece of, our new business, item number one is we need to substitute. We have our new acting, he's online tonight. Lee Palmer is our interim town manager and we just need to grant him the authority to apply for grants and turn to grant agreements and execute other specific contracts, including signing checks on behalf of the town. So obviously we had previously authorized a Roche to do that. So if we could just have a motion, Charlie, to do that.
I move to substitute Mr. Lee Palmer, interim town manager, as authority to apply for grants and enter into grant agreements to execute, execute other specific contracts, including signing checks on behalf of the town of Berlin.
Thank you, second on that. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so moved. Thank you. So now we go on to our second topic is our, why we're here tonight, we just thought we'd kind of get this discussion started tonight. We didn't have an audience of citizens, we just, I just want to get the folks in the audience, just get the council up to speed, it's been a while since we've discussed the whole item and we obviously have some new council members as well that haven't been involved, you know, since we began this a couple of years ago. So we just wanted to, we have given them, all of us, the study we did, the new plan and we'll just have some discussions tonight, probably walk through these things so everyone on the council is aware and certainly whoever's here in the audience and, you know, we're gonna, there, you know, there'll be other meetings that of course will have public input, but I thought tonight we just wanted to get us up to speed. So when we do, you know, talk to the public and people have questions, we're all kind of on the same page, which is important. So with that in mind, I, I think folks, what we can do is look through our packet here and it started with the the study, right? That's the first thing that was in here, right? Yeah. So this, right, let me see, I thought, I thought there was something else before this, but I guess there wasn't, right? No. So we we started with looking at a community center, it's twenty twenty-one, something like that. And, but, but before we started, we had to decide where it would be, right? So we had a study with, I think I'm gonna say four or five pieces of town property that we owned and we ultimately whittled it down to one, which everyone thought was the best place out of the property that we had looked at and that was the parcel across from the high school, right, on Patterson Way. So that's where we ended up, that parcel, we own it and whatever we put on there, obviously, you know, that, that's whatever plan we go with as we move forward, that's the spot. We thought it was close to, you know, fairly close to our, you know, Main Street, Farmington Avenue area and convenient for, you know, obviously we're looking to have a pool, convenient for folks that would use the pool and certainly convenient for folks at the high school and not too far away from our senior housing and for the swim team too. I'm sure they'd utilize whatever, whatever we put there. So that was the first step and then we hired an architect and he came up with a plan which was the focus of this, this study too. The plan I think was seventy, came out to be seventy-two thousand square feet, I believe, the first plan. Fairly large, we thought it was way too large price-wise and just size-wise, if you look at communities around, you know, around us in Connecticut, that's a, that's a very large building. I don't think anybody, I don't even know if any city has that size, but. So we kicked it back to Park and Rec. Before we did that, we, so we, we got to this first Berlin Community Senior Center, this was the, the subcommittee that we used, we had Brendan Luddy down in Bovee, Mike Gary Naga was on the council, Tim Grady, board of finance, Barbara Gumbats and Dave Seer and Jen Ochoa was the town liaison. We instituted this to kind of go around the state, which is what they did and look at other communities that had, you know, senior slash community centers and there's, this is, Kate, this is all online, right?
Yeah.
So folks, if they don't have it tonight, you guys, you folks in the audience online or here can certainly go get a copy of this. I suggest you do if you're interested and look through it. So along with that process of the first one, we, we had this study and the group visited many of these, we looked at, I guess, the Bloomfield, I'm just gonna look through this real quick. The Bloomfield Senior Center, the Mansfield Community Center, Glastonbury, Newtown, Branford, Wyndham, Rocky Hill, the Meriden Y and the Hale Putnam Y. So they went through it, they visited, I think, I, I think most of them visited most of these and we put together quite a package of, you know, everything from what, what they offered, what it costs, the size, what activities they had. And then there were some conclusions, which is another thing we could, we could go over here, it's in our packet. So that's just part of it, there's several appendixes in here for, for the, the new people on the council, which has additional information, notes from the visits, which is, you know, both good and bad, good things they saw, bad things they saw, what, what the towns wish they did differently or, you know, didn't do it all. So that played into our decision after this and we could talk about this a little bit later tonight too and more in detail, just kind of, kind of run through, run through what we have in the packet. We got the update from the chair, who, who was Brendan Luddy, our deputy mayor at the time and he gave that to us back in twenty twenty-two and he went through again the different sizes, just just to put some information about the size, the square footage, which was the, I think, the issue in the beginning that we, why we went back and studied it again and we'll get to that in a moment. And I'm just recapping for everybody here. And so the, the ones that they looked at at the tour, the, the largest one was fifty-six thousand square feet, that was the Bloomfield one. Mansfield, which seemed to be pretty close to what we were, something we were looking at maybe thirty-eight thousand, they had a pool, of course. Some of these don't have a pool, Glastonbury, twenty-one thousand, they, I don't think they had a pool. Newtown, which was, I think, the newest one, right? Was that one of the newest ones we looked at, I believe, at the time, that was fifty thousand square feet. Branford had a thirty-three thousand square foot one, Wyndham thirty-three thousand, Rocky Hill was sixteen. Most of these don't have a pool and then the Meriden Y and the Putnam Y, it was thirty-three thousand, the Putnam was forty-six thousand. So those, and we had a set, we were looking at the time at a seventy-two thousand square foot building. I think in the end, after the group went through it and we all looked at it, I think the feeling on the council at that point in time was very large, way too large, seventy-two thousand square feet, that's, that's a very large building and we didn't think it, you know, it was the size that we needed. So we went back to Park and Rec and Commissioner Neeagin helped you, right? We put a little community together, you guys studied it and went to our local, Brian Humes here in town and he looked through the plan and we came up with a, a new plan, which he presented in April of this year. So kind of brings us up to date on that, he did, with, with all the input from the folks on that study, we shrunk it down, I think the, it shrunk down to, I think, fifty thousand, is that, was that what we came out to be, I believe? Fifty-two, fifty-two thousand. So that's the plan that got presented back in April to the council. And we went through, you know, everything, again, a pool, of course, and they shrunk it down and, you know, by, I guess, about twenty thousand square feet. And we have that presented to us and of course, at the same location, we thought that was the best place and and so, so here we are now, we, you know, we've, we've got this second plan. And then we have an alternate plan, the alternate plan is the YMCA. They've, they've approached the town, they approached the town even in the beginning, we really didn't go chasing the Y, they came chasing us. So that's an alternative that we need to discuss, it, it is discussed in, in the study that we did. And the Y, I think, has made a couple brief presentations to the council, telling them what they would do. I think they're talking, if I remember correctly, I think they're talking about a thirty thousand square foot building they would, they would put up on, if we, if we chose them, it would be on that same property with the pool, of course, you know, the, the goal here is certainly to get an indoor pool for our residents and, and for, to help out the swim team, of course, as well, as an added benefit. So they went through what they do, we've, and of course, we've looked at a couple of the Ys, the Meriden Y, which is, as you, most of you probably know, it's New Britain, Berlin and Meriden, they're all one Y, run by John Benigni and he's very familiar with Berlin, of course, his brothers are superintendent, Brian Benigni. And the Y in town, as you know, also, we, we have a very close relationship with the YMCA. They have daycare in our middle school and McGee and in Hubbard, I believe they have a room in Hubbard. And in, in kind of working with them, with that, we, the building that used to be the, the small YMCA that was in Kensington Center, there next to Kensington Pizza, they kind of traded with us, we gave them some space in McGee and Hubbard and they traded the space in that building for the Transitional Academy for, for our, our students that graduate and need some additional help as they transition into the community. And I think they, they have a bunch of programs for those people, they do a great job with those folks that are coming out of high school and need some help to get, to get going in life. And we also have some Cromwell students that are also there too. So it was kind of a, a good relationship and the Y also has other, you know, programs in town. So there, there is a close relationship and they are interested, they are interested, you know, they, they, they think it's a good fit for them, they're, obviously have YMCA's and the two towns as part of their, their group and they would like to add one in Berlin, so that, that's another option that, as we run through this. And we do, we do have some discussion and, and some of the information that we have, the pros and cons of that too, obviously. Whatever plan you, you look at, there's pros and cons. So that's kind of where we're at now, we've got the revised plan at fifty-two thousand, same piece of property. We'd be talking about whatever choice we made or, or no choice, you know, we don't do anything. That's, that's always could be the third choice, I don't think that's a good choice, but there are three choices. And the fifty-two thousand one, the Y, or we do nothing, or we come up with something else. I mean, I think many of us were, were hopeful that we, we, you know, I think initially when we built our new high school, I think there was a pool in the plans, if I'm not mistaken and somewhere along the way, I guess it got taken out due to the cost of the project, that's too bad, we would have had our indoor pool associated right next to the high school. So that's too bad that they didn't get there, but it is what it is, so that's where we're here now. And of course, Berlin, as long as I can remember, has been looking at a community center. I remember the last time, I think we got serious was, we were gonna buy the old Lions Pool on Norton Road, right? I think that was in contention to be the senior community center there and that, for whatever reason, didn't, didn't work out, that's, I don't know what that is, twenty years ago now, maybe more. There's three houses on that property now, so that, that property is not there. And then I don't know what happened kind of in the interim and then we finally came up, you know, we discussed it in the last few years and recognized the need for something else in Berlin to meet some of our needs. Obviously, we have our senior center at Percival and we have our community center under, under the library. So those are existing space, I believe both of those together are twenty-eight thousand and change of space that we have. So that's what we have now, of course, no pool, no indoor pool. And just to adjust the pools for a moment, you know, we, obviously we still have Percival and we're, we're looking at, we have, we have a study going on with the East Berlin Pool. That needs a lot of work, we've had, you know, trouble over there staffing it the last couple of years. We haven't had a lot of attendance, according to Park and Rec. So we're looking at, to see what to do over there, one of the things that most folks seem to be interested in and they brought that to, to us at the council, to Park and Rec, is a splash pad. So that's, it's a, something that we're, we're thinking about in the study. Whether we fix that pool or go to a splash pad and of course Percival would remain where it is. So that's just those are kind of where we're at, splash pads. I know New Britain has one, I know Rocky Hill has one, most, several of the towns that I've heard of that have splash pads. It's kind of a very popular thing, it's, it's a lot of, a new, a new thing the towns are going to. I don't think that many had them in the past, but that seems to be. And we, you know, just the folks that have been at some of the meetings that I've been at, that seems to be a lot of folks are interested in, in the splash pad. I think we originally thought about doing one up on Worthington Ridge in that playground, but I think just due to the, the water and the way that location is, that we're looking at the pool in East Berlin seemed like a more logical spot to put it if we do not decide to fix that pool and reopen it and make that a splash pad. So those are some other things that are under consideration as well and that study's ongoing now for, for East Berlin. So I, I don't know about, and, and you, you could say Donna, if you want, just the, I don't know, this summer, I'm just curious on the attendance at our pool at Percival this year, is it the same, lower, higher than what you've seen? Or kind of the same trend, we, we've seen like a downward trend, right? If I recall or, or, yeah, you can, yeah, yeah.
I can't, I don't have the statistics.
Okay. Yeah. So, oh, no, no, I know, I just, I, I figured why you're here, no, 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 it's okay, no, it's information.
About something.
It's, it's, yeah. Just answer the question, please, no, I'm just kidding. So, so what happened, what did you say with the hundred?
So on.
When the, the glass, right?
Last Sunday.
Yeah. The glass.
We had to close the pool due to glass being found at the bottom, it was Saturday, like, a hundred people there.
Okay, on that day.
It's been a hot, it's been.
It's been a hot summer, yes, 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 sure.
I can't, you know, I don't have the statistics.
Yeah, well, we could, we could look at that and see, yeah, I appreciate you getting and getting that fixed, that we did get that pool, you know, drained. Yeah, it's a good job, yeah. I'm sorry I didn't get back to you when you texted me first, because I was at my son's wedding, so I, I, it was, I thought that was more important at the time, but, but, yeah. So I, I didn't get back that quickly, but huh? No, I told him he could still run, I, no, 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 I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. But yeah, you, you, you got on that very fast and, and, and that's good, so. But anyway, so that's kind of where we're at, I, I think we need to, you know, make a decision on what we do, you know, with whatever options, discuss the options a little bit, certainly have another meeting, whether it's here or whether it's a high school, wherever, you know, maybe in, certainly, probably in September when folks are back in town, I, I thought this was a good time to get started, a lot of people are still on vacation. We're all here though, we didn't, we're not on vacation right now, but that's okay. And just get this started, so if we have another public meeting, we're all kind of on the same page, at least what the information is. So that's my very quick thumbnail sketch of where, how we got here. You know, we can go through maybe these documents, just kind of go through them briefly and see what anyone on the council has any questions on it and just familiarize you with them, if, you know, we've. Both of us, including myself, have not looked at it for a while, I reviewed it before tonight, but.
Have an initial question.
Yeah, absolutely.
I can get it started for us.
Get it started, yes, Kate, please do.
I know.
Yes.
Do we have any updated numbers on the per capita debt service that we are and like where we rank in the hundred and sixty-nine towns in twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-four as opposed to twenty nineteen?
Yeah, we could get that, yeah, I, I, well, certainly the.
We were high up, right?
Correct.
You know, and for Central Connecticut, we were one of the highest, right?
Correct.
I'd just be curious to know, you know, if we're in better shape by comparison.
We are in better shape, we're down to, from, I think we're down to fifty-three million worth of bonded debt now, probably in twenty nineteen, probably in the mid-seventies, I'm guessing, something like that. I mean, we started nine years ago with around a hundred and seven million in debt, got, and so we're paid down to about fifty-three and I believe next fiscal year, there's some more falling off too. So we're, we're certainly trying to get down to what the auditors have told us, obviously, since we paid it down. So far, that's what earned us the triple A bond rating about three years ago. And the percentage of debt that, that we've heard from the auditors that a town is healthy with, based upon your budget, your total budget, I think a total budget this year is a hundred and, what is it, a hundred and seven million? I think it came out to be something like that. Should be about forty percent of your budget of any town carrying debt or, you know, different projects and, and different things. So next year, if we didn't bond, some of the things we just recently bonded, but that, that's fine, it needed to be done, we would be around that forty percent. We'll probably be a little bit higher just because we just bonded the, the two HVAC projects, right? We bonded the police renovation, we're gonna bond the, the roofs for town hall. So, you know, we're probably back up, maybe if we, if we're getting to that number of forty-three, we're probably back up to fifty or so next year with the, with the new bond issues, but we've tried to be fairly conservative with bonding and we've tried to pay as we go, you know, we've tried, we, we've gotten a lot of projects done and, you know, we've used our surplus every year to do what we need to do. But yeah, so the per capita is looking a little better than it did. But it's looking, it's, we're trying to get to what we should maintain.
Understood.
For a healthy financial, fiscal picture for the town, so, but yeah, that's, that's where we're at. Thank goodness we're not that high, I don't believe, but we, we'll check, we can check that, we'll see how that works out. Yeah, because we do, some of the figures in there as we look through, yeah, we do have to update a few things.
So I have a question.
Yeah, please.
The size of the pool, because I know we've been back and forth and there's lots of paper here, so I just want to be clear. This was so that the, the team can dive in it and lanes or swim or what's the status with that?
That's, that to be determined, I mean, certainly we want, whatever the length of the, you know, the pool is for swim meets, right? Is what we would want, whether we build it or whether, you know, a third party builds it. The diving is another issue, I, I don't know about that, the dive, that's very expensive and the insurance is a fortune for, for diving platforms. That's something we'd have to look at, I don't, I don't know, you know, what we would do as a town.
I know we have, obviously, a dive team and I, you know, Heather did it, the swim team too, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I was just curious.
I think they have two or three divers on the team.
There's a, just a couple of the divers, but you know, there is a, a good amount of them that do swims.
Oh, yeah, no, I think it's, it will be helpful for the swim team, they use the, I think they use the Meriden Y.
Yeah, they, but they bust them back and forth to Meriden, at least that's how it was.
They don't have a dive, they don't have a, they don't have a diving board there.
No.
I, I don't know where they go to dive, but they go, where do they go?
Plainville.
Oh, Plainville, okay, okay. And Plainville Y has a dive, they do, oh, okay. That's interesting, because the Plainville Y is their community senior center in Plainville, so that's, 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 that's all they have, so. But yeah, it, to be determined with, with the dive platform. Yeah, I think, I think a lot of towns are nervous about the diving, obviously, because that's where the most risk is and that's certainly very, very high insurance premiums on that, from what I understand and looking through all this for the last few years and hearing what to do with that, but that's another decision we have to make. But it would certainly be, other than the diving, the lanes and whatever they would need for a swim meet, lengthwise, lane-wise, would, would, I would, that's a definite, I would say, what we need to have. And the diving to be determined, to be discussed.
So we have in our, in the packet that was given, the presentation from Humes.
Yes, yes, the new, the new one.
But I thought a month or a month and a half prior to that, the Y did come in and do a presentation as well. Do we have anything from that?
That's a good question, yeah, what, what do we have, Kate, from the agenda?
That would be helpful.
Yes, we can get that out.
If I remember correctly, counselor, it was just a kind of a PowerPoint, but I can look it up. I wasn't asked to provide that, but I'm happy to email it out to you guys, I'll find it tomorrow hopefully and I'll get it out to you guys.
Well, as I recall, all they presented to us wasn't anything specific to what they might do here, it was, you know, showing us what they had done in Meriden.
Yeah, I think you're right.
How helpful anything that they presented would be.
I, I think that she's right, I don't think it was really specific what they, you know, had gotten into.
Let me find out and I can send it to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you. And thank you for my card.
Yeah, we just had them do an overview, I mean, there was a lot of things that people had brought up, I think I, we brought them here for some questions. There's always the question of the cost for the residents for the Y, I guess, and as, as you look through this, there are, are study here and I think Mansfield does it a lot. A, a lot of them, most of them, from what I saw, looking through it today briefly, the ones that are town-owned, they have fees as well. In fact, Mansfield, from what I understand, also goes out and needs donations to keep theirs running. And we'll get a little bit more on Mansfield, actually, our, our acting town manager, Lee Palmer, worked there. He's very familiar with the Mansfield project, so maybe we'll have him give us a little update, if not, if not tonight, next time. But they're not doing so well financially. That's thirty-eight thousand with a pool, thirty-eight thousand square feet with a pool. But so, you know, there's always a question of, well, it's a town building, there, there's fees now at the senior center for different things, that, different activities and most of these that are owned by the towns do have fees similar to what the Y charges and. And the thing that comes up time and time again, and we've tried to clear this up a couple times, but it does persist out there sometimes on social media, is the Silver Sneakers program, so our seniors, from what Mr. Benigni said at that presentation, I believe he said 68% of the seniors at a Y in Meriden and New Britain, wherever in this area, would be eligible for the Silver Sneakers program, meaning that it's through their health insurance or Medicare, Medicaid, you know, Medicaid, whatever, whatever they're on, would, would pay for their membership. And certainly, I would make the recommendation that if we, and we, you know, the last town manager, we, and I spoke about this a few times, I think we brought it up in a council meeting, that even if we had the YMCA build the building, just, just say for the sake of argument, if you got 68, 70% of our seniors getting it paid for through Silver Sneakers, the rest of it, to me, the town picks up the rest of whatever. If they want to join, remember, if it's a Y, they don't have to join, they join, they, they pay, they don't, they don't, you know. But we could, we could pay for that membership and, you know, it would be a lot less expensive than a brand new building, but that's just a thought on that, but they, mostly it's covered by the Silver Sneakers. With the Y, because folks said it was, be more, it would be too expensive for folks to join, and they're, they definitely work with people, so that's just something to keep in mind in every community that I've been in with the Y across the country, California, you name it, Virginia, here in Connecticut, in Stanford, and of course, here in our area, here with New Britain and Meriden, so. But there's more they have to flesh out, no doubt, about what, what they would build, I think they talked about a 30,000 square foot building with a pool, and I think the Meriden one is in here, what's the Meriden one, 35,000 maybe, it's something like that in there. Right, something like that, so, you know, it's, it's, it's a little bit all over the place with the size, but, so we're the 52,000 for the town. The, the thing I did know in that plan, there was a lot of what, what I gathered from some of these and talking to some other towns, including Rocky Hill, they don't have a pool. The, the goal is, certainly, the, the pool is the goal for us, and that's what we need, that's probably the most important thing we need is indoor pool. But is, you know, if you have a lot of different rooms that aren't used all the time, that seems to be where the space consideration comes in, and I noted in our plan for 52,000, there's a lot of different rooms broken out for different tasks. I think what others have done in other towns, including the Y in different towns, they have, you know, two or three community rooms that are multipurpose rooms, so it depends on what group may want to use them, or what activity they're, you know, using it for, whatever, whatever their programs might be, you use the same room, you know, at different times of the day for different programs, instead of having multiple rooms that are for this or that, you know, it takes up more space, so. That's what I've kind of gathered from looking through some of this, and that's what the Y did say in their presentation. And you could see that at the Plainville Y, I don't know if any of you folks have gone to the Plainville Y, but that's that's what they kind of do there too. And that is their community center, and then I don't think, I don't think we went to Southington, right? Did the group go to Southington? You guys didn't look at Southington, Southington, same thing, they have a YMCA, behind the YMCA is the senior center, so it's kind of contiguous to it, but ours is not that close, but, you know, still down the street, so just something to, to think about, but. So what else, what else we thinking with thoughts, questions? What do we want to do, I mean, we're gonna review some of this on our own too, but.
Yeah.
What's the?
My general feeling?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I, I don't mind saying it for.
No, that's good, yeah.
I mean, I guess, you know, when I'm thinking about a YMCA and what we need, I guess my biggest concerns with that would be, number one, the lack of control that we have as a town over what is done, what is built, how it is used, all of those things, you know, if it's our building, you know, we have more of a vested interest and more control over what our residents can use it for. And then I guess my secondary concern would be if they're proposing a much smaller building than what, you know, has been proposed and what we need for our statement of use. Not only that, it's smaller, and you know, and I understand, you know, bringing down the square footage to save costs and all of that that we can talk about, but if their, you know, proposed square footage is 30,000 feet, but then they also have needs and uses for that space, so what will be left over for us to use, right? If they're putting gym, fitness room, their daycares in there and everything else, I mean, that's not even stated in our statement of need, right? So, you know, what are the potentials for conflict and how much are we actually going to get to use it? How much are our residents actually going to get to use it? So I guess, when I'm thinking about a Y, those are probably my two biggest concerns right now. And I do understand on the other side of that, the biggest concern I would have about building a community center is what it's going to cost our, our tax people to pay for it, right? For constituents to pay for it. So to me, in my head, those are my biggest, you know, conflicts, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, all, definitely valid points, no questions, yeah.
I don't think the Y would try to replace the senior center, I think we'd still have to maintain the senior center.
Yeah.
I don't think we eliminate that cost, where if we built our own, we could move the senior center into the new building. But I don't think our voters are ready to approve a $40 million expenditure, I don't think we'll get it through referendum.
It's more than that.
It'll be more than that, plus the three or four million a year to maintain it, I don't think our voters are going to go for that, so is the Y a perfect dancer? Would we give up control of a lot of things? Probably. But it's something better than nothing.
And I, I think we're talking, if, if I'm not mistaken, if anybody remembers, maybe Donna does, I, I don't know Donna Bovee, but didn't, didn't, you couldn't, you couldn't see you say $1,000 a square foot?
Yeah, you know.
So we're at 50 million.
Right, well, you know, you look, when you're looking at costs too, back in 2021, OANM did a this was for the senior center, they came up with a cost of $35,736 at that time to build the community center. And you look now for what is being proposed by Brian Humes, you know, it's $1,000 a square foot, 50 million. So from '21 to '24, you're talking a 15 million, or 15 million dollar increase. You know, there was a breakdown by OANM of what they were going to spend their money on, their hard costs and their soft costs and everything else. When I went, I checked with Mike Ahern's, you know, earlier part, last part of last week, and that would, you know, called, well, he sent an email to Brian, and I followed up on that, and, you know, based on his scope of work, he wasn't, he said he was not able to provide a breakdown of the cost, this way here, we could have actually looked and saw what, you know, compared apples to apples, but he said, based on the scope of work, all he was required to do was, you know, just give a, a general cost of, and that's where we got the $1,000 a square foot.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I mean, between 2021 and now, and I believe that 35 million was for a, a larger community center, and this is for 50, 50,000 square foot community center. And to go up $15 million in that short period of time.
Yeah.
That's why I wanted to see a breakdown.
Yeah.
And we don't have that.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can maybe get a better estimate, rather than having to go back to him, maybe Public Building Commission can give us a little estimate of it, that's.
That was, you know, that's, to me, if he can't provide hard figures, that's a guess on his part.
Yeah, well.
The other issue is, all architects that work for the government build what they claim a 50-year building, which is brick and mortar and red steel like this building. The building materials in this country are 20 to 25-year lifespan, they built this calling it a 50-year building. We spend a couple hundred grand every few years keeping it alive. We don't need this type of building to house a pool and a gymnasium, private entities build it for hundreds of thousands instead of millions. And the other advantage an organization like the Y has is they're not stuck with the Davis Bacon Act. They don't have to use very expensive labor rates that the government has to use. So they could build more for less. And if we did make an accommodation with them, it wouldn't preclude us from investing in our senior center or even building another senior center for maybe five or 10 million.
Right, so is it really an either or, do you know what I mean? Is it either a town funded and built community and senior center with a pool, or a YMCA? Or is there maybe a third option? And I'm not saying that, you know, people have done it, but like, that is almost like a joint venture between the town and the Y?
Well, that's what I'm kind of, that, so to your point, I was gonna add to you that, and talking to the Y on several occasions to Benigni and one of the members of the board, that's what they are considering this, like, we, we've talked about, you know, working with Berlin on what we want, what programs we want, what things we want, they're willing to cater, you know, a little bit, of course, to us, I mean, they have their, you know, what they need to do and, and with their organization, but it would be a, a partnership, that's what we're, obviously, we would lease them the land for, you know, they're a nonprofit for a dollar a year, I mean, that's our contribution to them to, to get the building built, but, yeah, they're, they're, I mean, like I mentioned earlier, we're already in partnership with them, they're in our school system, providing daycare at McGee and Hubbard.
Sure.
Right, they gave us the Transitional Academy, so we can expand that for our students that need the extra time after high school, so, you know, they're very committed to our community, and obviously, his, his brother's the superintendent of schools, he's taught here for 30 years, so, I mean, you know, there's, there's a real, a lot of connections here. It's not just going to be, they come and build a building and, hey, it's the Y, and we don't care what Berlin wants, that, that's not it at all, and I've heard that, some people say that, that, that's just not what they're talking about, but it, it would be a partnership and, and what we're looking to do, and the other part you mentioned, which I can't, can't ever get this through my head, a, a lot of people have said, it's, well, you know, we gotta have a town building, we gotta control it, control what? I, I, I'm not sure what we have to control, but I know we have to pay a, a lot of money, and so if we're down to $50 million in debt, we're gonna go right back up to 100 million, which seems just about as fiscally irresponsible as you can get, that's my opinion. But I don't know what the control thing is, we already own too many town buildings, we have Pistol Creek sitting there wasting away to nothing, and that's going down the drain, you know, we gotta figure out what to do with that, and it's hard when a government owns a building, you can't, it's hard to do certain functions in it, I mean, we kind of kick that around, quite frankly, with the Y using that building, but I don't know if it's quite what we need, certainly the pool, there's no pool, I don't know if there's room for a pool there, but and we've talked about various other private ventures using that, but as a town, we've talked to, you know, Jeff could explain it better than I can, but it, it's difficult to go into business like that. So there's a building, a town building just wasting away to nothing. And I, I don't know what the control thing is, I don't, I don't know what we get out of the programs that the Y has, and that we, of course, would supplement with, the park and rec's not going anywhere. You know, we're gonna still have our senior center, and we could still keep the community center that we have under the, under the library if we want to.
Do we, like, those facilities are providing
Yeah.
a space that is good enough for our.
Well, with.
Don't they want something better or more?
Well, so let's look at the senior center, so the senior center, and reviewing some of the numbers, and the pandemic and after the pandemic is a little bit different, but we got about, I don't know, the estimates are around 7,000 seniors in town, I think seniors, I'm not sure I got the right age, I don't know if it's over 55 or if it's over 65, I don't know, but whatever the definition of the seniors, I think it's around 7,000, so you've got I think the last figure I saw on the Berlin seniors, they got about 900 visits a year, not 900 people, I think 900 visits by maybe five or 600 folks. Now, that's without a pool, you know, that's without, but they, you know, they have activities there, but it, it's not I, I guess if we were, the way I look at it is, we were bulging at our community center and bulging at our senior center, oh my God, we need space, we have no space to do anything. I, I don't see that as being the case in Berlin. The pool, to me, is the biggest issue, you know, the pool would be great, certainly for our swim team, certainly for moms with toddlers, certainly for seniors, I mean, that's what happens if you go to the Meriden Y or the New Britain Y between nine and three on a weekday, who's there? When I visited there a couple times, it's all seniors at the Y, that's who's there, I mean, in Santa Monica, California, it was all seniors. In Fairfax, Virginia, it was all seniors where I lived, in Stanford, I mean, that's who's there Monday through Friday. So they service our seniors with the pool and other programs, and they service other parts of our community too, so. Which we could do too with our own building, but at what cost to the taxpayers? And, and the startup cost at 50 million is incredible, that, that's, you know, we're, that's, I don't know how many years out to pay that off, but we still haven't paid off the high school yet. And that was 85 million, part of it that the state paid for, still waiting on a refund from that, by the way, that they owe us, I think 3 million back, but. And then there's the, the carrying cost. I think the carrying cost, if I'm not mistaken, in Newtown with the pool, 2 million a year, 2, 3 million a year, something like that. I think a pool alone is half a million to a million, these are just rough estimates from reading through all this stuff, so. So that's burdening the town with quite an expense, and we have so many other projects to do, wouldn't it be nicer to take some of that tomorrow? Money we'd have to borrow for that. The Y covers the services that we're probably looking for, certainly the pool would be in Berlin. The swim team could walk across the street to their swim meets. Seniors could use it, moms with toddlers could use it, whoever wants to use it, we could all go swim there and spend it on some other projects we have in town, Lord knows, we have many projects to do, so. You know, I look at it as a kind of cost benefit analysis, like, we have other stuff to pay for where our bonding is gonna go up, certainly, it's gonna go up, we probably can't keep it around 40 million, you know, or 40% of our budget always. So do we spend it all on this one project? Or do we, if we can have a substitute, that's, you know, I don't, we don't control it, I don't know what we need to control it for, I don't really I don't know what we're looking to control, we have our own park and rec to do our own stuff, who works in conjunction with the Y anyway, in town, and we have, you know, like I said, we have our own senior center, which is totally our building, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I, I, that, these are just, you know, you gotta think about it, yes.
We know my drop process, thought process is a little different than everyone else. But I think we can separate the projects. And by separating the projects, I mean, we put the pool on the footprint of the high school.
That's another thought.
We're eligible for state funding.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's another thought.
What, we don't, the state doesn't fund, we could bond. As far as the senior center goes, when I worked for the state, we had to close the New Britain Motor Vehicle Department.
Yeah, yeah.
The health department closed us down. So anyway.
What's the problem there, Peter, not Serge?
And we were tasked with putting a another motor vehicle department there, and when the other agencies found out, they jumped on and what started out as a $20 million project turned into a 60 million, then that was 20 years ago.
Yeah.
So what we did was, we had a contractor build a building who didn't have to conform to anything, they're just building a building, and we rented from them. And after, if we bond the, the pool and that's 30 years, well, then if we want, we could buy it from them.
Yeah.
And bond it then, and not have the taxpayers really take the brunt of it.
That's a thought, well, it's interesting to say that, building it by the high school.
And let me just say one thing.
Good thought.
I don't have anything against the Y.
Yeah.
But if they're gonna come down and sink 30 million bucks in this community, the only way they're gonna get it, I think, the most obvious reason is to sell their current assets. And if they sell their current assets, those members are gonna come to Berlin.
Oh, sell what, the other Ys, you mean?
Yeah, Meriden and New Britain, I don't think they're sitting with 30 million bucks anywhere. Like, I know they're not.
Their financial.
They're gonna have to go raise it.
They have to raise it, they do.
And the best way to raise it is to, why would you have three facilities within 10 miles when you could have one major facility, new facility, sell off very ancient buildings in both cases?
Yeah.
But then we'll take the brunt of it, our, our residents may not have the opportunity with the bigger communities using the, the Y. That, and, we talked about the cost.
Yeah.
You, you're gonna have to join the Y to go over there, I mean, even if it's a senior center, you're gonna have to join the Y to go there, and I, I don't, I just have a I'm reticent about partnering with the Y for those reasons, I mean, I can't think of no other way to come up with $30 million is just to sell the other two.
Well, I don't know if it's 30, I, I don't, I don't know what it's gonna cost, but I, you know, I, I mean, I've asked some folks, have it's been said that their financial situation is, is not good, and that's at least from the board of directors, the people I speak to on the Y and, and the director, that's, couldn't be further from the case, or actually, the Y is doing very, very well after, certainly after the pandemic, they're doing even better. According to them, I mean, but they, they're public, you know, you could, you could find out their balance sheet, but, but the good point, but building it at the high school, you know, that's a thought, and, and, and that, that's not bad. What, what I worry about with that is, I mean, the Y, the, the high school, if you. But what I worry about with that is, I mean, the Y, the high school, if you guys have seen it, has the most amazing weight room I've ever seen. They probably, they rival Gold's Gym in Venice, California. Okay, it's quite, which is wonderful for the students there. And McGee has a nice facility too. My question is, if we build the, the pool at the high school, you know, town, town builds it. Let's say, let's say we even, you know, we bond for it. Are they going to just absorb it and we're not going to get to use it? Because remember back in the day, Peter, like even not that long ago, we used to go to the high school. We, the, a lot of the summer basketball, the winter basketball leagues, we kind of play at the high school play. They still do it, I know at Willard, the younger kids, but the older kids could use the high school. That kind of went away somewhere. And they got two gyms now at the high school, right? They got two, they got a weight room, and now we build the pool. I worry we're going to spend that money and the seniors and the young moms with the, and the rest of us won't be able to use it.
We'll make them one off for Lake County.
I mean, I, I like it. I like it. Yeah, we could.
It could be written into it.
We could, yeah. I, I mean, if we could do it, yeah.
When they remodeled the high school for 100 million dollars, we had to have this auditorium because it would seat enough people. It doesn't even seat the student body. And it was going to be available to the town for functions. And we need a big auditorium and that was the big selling point. And when the town has a meeting there, the school department doesn't even have handicap parking. They lock up the elevators so the people got to climb the stairs. I mean, there's just no coordination with the community and the schools. It doesn't mean the Y will have good coordination either, but it's just, we've got 10,000 square feet empty in the high school we could use for a senior.
They wrote down.
Well, I, I'm concerned about funding. And I think with state, on, on the school footprint, not across the street, we're eligible for state funding. I mean, why not take advantage of that? Who knows what it could be if it's 30, 40%? I mean, that's a big nut to crack.
I know Wallingford has a pool in the high school and it's open for family use in the evening. Very well used.
I'm sure we can work that out.
Wallingford has two high schools.
Yeah.
I don't know, but I've been to the one with the pool and.
Do both of them have pools, my question?
I don't know.
You don't know?
But it was a great program, a great facility.
I think Sandy.
Oh, yeah. So what, what do they have, Kate?
Is it working out?
Does it work?
Sheen, thank you.
And the community. Is in it, do you know? Hey, you got to get on the mic. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm going to say that it used to be very well used by the public. I don't know after the pandemic and also with the school shutting down because they don't want outsiders in.
Oh, it's security.
So I don't know now. You would have to check with the.
Worth exploring though. Yeah, yeah, that's worth exploring.
Yeah, just a couple of things, because I've been jotting a couple of notes down. With putting it on the, on the high school grounds, maybe by doing that, I know you said that maybe there's some grant money for that. But maybe we can also look at a different type of building because there's other type of buildings that have been built for swimming facilities. You know, there's one in Rocky Hill. There's a couple others around where maybe it wouldn't cost as much.
That's good.
Growing up in West Haven, we had a pool at the high school. When I was younger, we used to go there, you know, starting at certain times. It was open to the, you know, open to the public to go. I hate to say it, at the time, we had to pay 50 cents to go.
Oh, my God. A budget buster.
There was a line of us, you know, there was a line of people to go in and swim. During the school days when I was at, at the high school, you know, we would, part of our gym classes, you could swim or the, you know, the, the high school swim team would use it sometimes during the day. We had a daycare program in the high school. And, you know, at times they would take the kids to the pool. We had a dive pool as well. So having it on the grounds allowed the students to use it in multiple ways. And then the public used it weekends, evenings, et cetera. And it worked out pretty well. Something maybe, you know, if we look at the type of building we use too, maybe that can, can save some monies. And then the only other thing I thought about, you know, and I don't remember who said it, but there was a point of saying, you know, do the citizens want to pay potentially $50 million for this building? And that's easy, can easily be decided by a referendum if it goes that way. The other part we also have to think of is there's, you know, chatter out there as well that the citizens also don't want the Y coming into the town. There's no referendum for that. So that's something we've got to be mindful of as, as well. You know, we have to look at, at both sides of it. And I'm sure there's, there's a resolution somewhere in there. But I wasn't aware of the, the potential grants, so that might be something to look at.
I don't think the Y option did not have a referendum. I think if we were going to support a Y option, we should look for the voters' input.
I don't know if by town charter it's required. I'm sure that's probably something we could put out. I don't know how that would work, but.
Efficient for a referendum.
It's only required for, you know, over, we spend over $5 million, has to go to referendum. If the town spends over $5 million.
My, my concern.
I'm not saying that we, we wouldn't, but I'm just saying that's what it says in the charter. But yeah.
My concern is if we go into the residence now and say, okay, give us $50 million, it's not going to pass. We all know that. And why throw the baby out with the bathwater? We get the pool and we bond it. It's, it's not going to be 30 million.
I hope not.
And if we bond it and we get some state funding, we're eligible for state funding, right? If it's not the high school?
I don't know. Jeff, Jeff is there. Jeff.
You, you would have to do, you would have to do an ed spec. It would have to be for educational purposes. If it's for community purposes, it would not be eligible for reimbursement. If, as a matter of fact, if you put it on a school campus and you allow the community and they won't reimburse it, even if it's on a school campus.
Okay.
Okay.
It's got to be.
Then answers that question, but.
We're separating the question so we don't lose the pool. My concern is losing the pool, but I also want a senior center. I mean, and I think we can do both with the, I call it rent to own on the senior center. There's enough large, I'm trying to think of the company, the local company who put up the motor vehicle in the, and the state rents it with an option to buy at some point.
That, that one, and you're talking about one up on the hill there, the, the motor vehicle one. That, that's like a, that looks like a butler type building, right?
Yeah.
So I, I'd be interested to talk to, speaking of that point, the, the new basketball academy. I forget the official name off of Forrod Road. We just went in there recently. Yeah, is that?
Been taking, kind of doing a basketball.
Yeah, yeah, so you know.
What do you want to know about?
Well, no, I mean, I've been in there and they do volleyball, I think some volleyball and basketball. And it's a great building. And, you know, he owns, he's partners with the, the one in, in Middletown, right? I think that's his partner or his whatever. But I, I, I know, I think I, I can't remember. I asked him what it costs to put that building up. It was not that expensive. I mean, you know, not $50 million, not even close, right? And you know better than me.
But, but.
Yeah.
But a private contractor doesn't have the constraints municipality has.
That's true too.
To build something.
Yeah, it's something to look at.
I proposed that for the police station and everybody said, oh, no, no, it's, it's against the law. You can't do that.
Yeah, police station is probably a little different, but.
But the state, unless the state did it and it worked out well. I mean, that was the only reason why we got that motor vehicle.
Yeah. I mean, it's worth looking at. You know, I mean, we all want the pool.
Right.
We got to do something for an indoor pool. No, no question, right? Something.
And I, and I think if we package this properly, we can get both.
Yeah, maybe we could.
I just made a note, Attorney DiNofio had to leave to go to another meeting.
Okay.
So 6:58 he left, just so that it's on the.
Oh, okay, okay. We just grabbed him before he left. Isn't that convenient? Yeah, you know, whatever. I, I mean, that, and you, you said it, Sandy, that I just happened to be up there the other day. I went down that street, I was going by the shooting range and I just went all the way up the end to the swim club in Rocky Hill. That does not look like an expensive building either with the, with the indoor pool, right? And Charlie, I think.
A bunch of garage doors.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the, the swim, yeah. That, that does not look like an expensive building. I mean, I know it's older now, but no, no, no. No, I mean, hey, it's an option.
No.
Yeah. Well, no, you, you shut. I think in the middle of the winter, are they, are they, yeah, they're open.
They're open in winter.
I think they are.
They are. The kids, yeah.
Yeah, I think my son went up there in the winter. Yes, yes, yes. Pretty sure they are.
That's an older building. There's all sorts of new technology, prefab buildings and inflatable buildings. And because you build a prefab building for the pool area, for the big gym area to put it, that doesn't preclude meeting it with a more conventional building for senior center meeting room. But all the architects we talked to, you paid quite a dollar of the project. So the more expensive the project is, the more money they make. It's kind of a backward system. The more they spend, the more they make. So it's hard to get an architect that wants to look at those.
And I figured I'd throw it out there and see.
Yeah, I think it's worth a, worth a look, worth a look.
You know, at this point in time, I think any option that we, we need to look at any option that's available. And then compare the costs and, and look at apples to apples and see what we can come up with.
Maybe we get a quick look at, let's get, let's get, yeah, because I, you know, we got, we got to do something. And, and I think we're all tired of waiting. I know I am, we all are. We've got to get something for the town, certainly in their, but yeah.
Nobody's comfortable with pitching a $50 million.
No, that's not going to go.
It's not going to go.
Absolutely. I mean, you know.
$20 million police station.
And we lose the pool because of it.
Yeah, we can't lose the pool.
And you know what's going to happen? You go to referendum, you're going to be wasting time and taxpayers' money. Bottom line.
Yeah, we could.
We need to do it soon because invest more money in our outdoor.
Yep, yep.
Silly.
Yep. So let's. Yep, no, no, it's worth, it's worth looking at.
That's it for the year. I'm done.
That's it? You're all done?
No more ideas.
I forget that maybe, you know, keeping in our minds as well that our seniors probably deserve better than what they have now.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Is there some kind of improving what they have?
Yes, yes, there is. Well, I think that would be in the plan too. Yeah.
That's, I mean, that would be behind something like that for sure. I think they deserve it.
Kate, I think if you, we look at something like that, if we do a different type of building maybe for the pool and, and modify that, I think then we can also look at, like you were saying, look at the senior center and see what we can improve. And I, I mean, I'm.
At the location.
I'm a construction or an architect, but I'm sure it's going to be well less than.
Sandy, that's a great option though. It really is. That's a great option. Look at it that way.
Senior Center, the housing authority owns that building, I believe.
They own the building, but I think they would be fine.
The other thing we could do, we could do a phased project like what we talked about with the police station. We could build a larger structure for the pool and all of that. And then plan in three or five years to build a second addition to it for the senior center.
You can do that too.
Do that too. So I, I'm trying to get this done the fastest way possible. So we have that as an option that's worth looking at. So, you know, a couple of those folks or most of them on the Public Building Commission have just extensive experience with building everything.
We have them look at the high school?
Yes, we should have them look at the high school and look at a, and, you know, quickly. I mean, not, you know, just ballpark it, get, get us some thoughts if, if we're all crazy here or it's a good idea or whatever.
Want to do something and actually do something, like actually assume.
We want to do something. We want to do it soon.
And maybe they could look at the place in Rocky Hill and see if that's feasible and.
Yeah, look at the, yeah.
It's just some option.
They always do their research. And again, most of them have built buildings all over the place and different types of buildings. So let's informally, I'm going to just talk to Don Lombardo there and, and what's the other guy? Tom Reed, I think is still on it, right? And, and they're pretty, they'll look into what, what's out there. Now, the question is, would we want it if what Charlie said, you know, for the future? If we want to, so we, we get the pool built, the, the building, you know, and the pool. So we get the pool, but now it's on the high school grounds. Now, if we decide or some other future council decides, hey, let's add a senior center, is it better to build that little building across the street? That way we can add to it? You put it on school grounds, you're stuck probably with the pool, just the pool.
I think if.
I'm just, yeah.
If the grant's off the table.
Right, if the grant's off the table, and that's why. Otherwise I'd. Right, right. That's what I think.
Then I would be, then I would be for moving it across the street where it has its own space.
Because then we could add to it.
Right.
And, and we wouldn't be stricken a high school.
Correct, correct. They could do their stuff. Yes. Right, right, right. Well, yeah, obviously, like you said, Kate, and that's good. Certainly the pandemic changed things as did school security. So that, that's very good to mention that. And that's probably would be the.
We're still going to have the carrying costs of maintaining a pool and all.
Correct, correct. Yeah.
Right, that's just part of it. That would be like, then do we not want a pool?
Well, well, no, we need a pool. I mean, I, I think the, to me, you know, Don is here from Park and Rec, but I don't know. We saw quite a, a great interest in a splash pad. So you do the splash pad beneath Berlin, you leave Percival and you do the indoor pool. I mean, you kind of got it all covered then, right?
Absolutely.
Probably not that much money. Yeah, it makes sense. It makes sense. Don't do it all at once. Yeah. Oh, someone will tell us we can't do it. But no, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.